I'd like to call the January 22nd, 2019 Regular School Board Meeting of Independent School District 622 to order. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we would like to get an approval of the agenda. I'm looking for a motion and a second. Moved by Davy?
Second.
Second by Livingston. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Okay, we have an approved agenda. Next, we have public comment. Do we have any public comment? Okay, no public comment. And then we have achievement awards. And we have several people here for achievement awards. Thank you for coming. I think the board will go down in the front and Nancy will read the achievement awards.
You want me to face this way? So, good evening. Thanks for coming. The school board of North St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale School District is proud of its students, citizens, and staff who demonstrate service above and beyond the call of duty. We are proud to recognize the following individual and later individuals. The first one is Kim Harview, Kitchen Manager at Eagle Point. She is being recognized for her quick thinking and speedy response in giving the Heimlich maneuver to a student who was choking in the lunchroom. The student is just fine and we're grateful to Kim for her excellent work. Kim is nominated by Paula Polkamp, Nutrition Services Supervisor. So, Kim, if you're here, would you come forward? Yay!
We'll all shake your hand and then we'll take a picture.
Way to go!
Now I can feel that way.
That's right.
Oh, it's awesome. So incredible. Come and stand here. Do you want us up front, Kathleen, or is...? Okay, let's go in front of the podium.
Okay. Okay. And next, Peter Mao is going to say a few words about our next category. Peter?
It was just a couple of springs ago and we noticed some trends in our kindergarten data. And so, as a Teaching and Learning Department, we decided that we would bring that information to the kindergarten teachers and ask them, you know, what might we be able to do about this? And it was an amazing response from our kindergarten team. We developed a kindergarten leadership team that had representatives from every site, as well as a kindergarten task force. And using the expertise within our own staff and the resources that we had, they developed a plan that resulted last year in significantly raising achievement for kindergarten students and at the same time narrowing, eliminating the race-based achievement gaps in some very key early literacy markers. And it was the hard work of those teams and every single kindergarten teacher in our district that really did this amazing thing. When you think about it, people should really be writing some articles about us. I mean, this is really incredible, really incredible work that was done. And I was just talking to some of our instructional coaches and they're seeing the results of the work that happened last year in kindergarten show up in how kids are performing in first grade. So, it wasn't just impacting kids in kindergarten, but in first grade, and we know that that impact is going to continue throughout their academic lives. So, a big thank you to you all.
Okay, and I'm also going to read on behalf of the board, the official statement about this. After determining that kindergarten students were not making the kind of progress we wanted in their early reading skills in the spring of 2017, a kindergarten leadership team was developed to determine causes and provide direction for addressing the problem. The leadership team determined that a framework and scope and sequence for teaching letter sounds was needed. A subgroup of the leadership team was established to create the scope and sequence for teaching letter sounds, as well as organizing and creating the necessary lessons and materials for the year. This kindergarten task force worked over the summer and throughout the 2017-2018 school year, developing the needed resources, analyzing student progress, monitoring data, and responding to needs from our kindergarten teachers. As a result of the work of the task force and our entire team of District 622 kindergarten teachers who implemented the plan, we increased the percentage of kindergarten students who were on track from 31% in December of 2017 to 76% by the spring of 2018. In addition, race-based gaps in performance were nearly eliminated. So, all right. Here, now I'm going to read a whole bunch of names. Okay? And we're starting with kindergarten task force members and leadership team members. And we should have them come forward as I read their names, or at the end? Okay. Okay, I'll read your name and you can just, as a, we'll just keep going, a stream of folks. Okay. So, kindergarten task force members and leadership team members, including Amy McGuire, Richardson Elementary. So, come on forward, Amy. Emily Toot, Castle Elementary. Megan Miller, Webster Elementary. Krista Edlund, Weaver Elementary. Susan Harmon, Webster Elementary. And Melissa Hood, Oakdale Elementary. So, come on down. Thank you. Do you want to do a picture of this group first? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Hang to the side for the picture. Should we do the picture at the end with everybody?
Oh, really? That's really a lot of little heads in one photo.
Okay, separately. Let's do them separately. That's fine.
I love it.
Carver Elementary, Sarah Buffy from Cowan Elementary, Nicole DeRuscia and Renee Kaiser from Eagle Point Elementary, Teresa Tao Yang from Oakdale Elementary, Hannah Robleski from Skyview Elementary, Penny Perry from the DEC, and Isabella Anderson Egan from the DEC. Kristen Blatchley from Carver Elementary, Emily Parent, Heather Jacobson from Castle Elementary, Megan Delos Reyes, Cindy Pierce Dorf from Cowan Elementary, Lori Lennon, Susan Campbell from Eagle Point Elementary, Eva Nowinski, Juanita Lewis, Annette Ilka from Oakdale Elementary, Emma Holton, Heather Cash, Bleea Yang from Richardson Elementary, Sue Buggy, Heather O'Brien, and Michelle Sunbled from Skyview Elementary, Kaitlin Holloway, Dave White, Carly Kloss from Weaver Elementary, and Sarah Zimmerman, and Margaret Hughes from Webster Elementary. So, thank you so much. Come on down.
Congratulations. You guys are amazing.
Congratulations.
Way to go!
Yep, must appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to get a little photo.
Gather together.
Yes.
We appreciate it so much. Next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. So, the consent agenda consists of routine items that are acted out in a single consolidated motion without board discussion. Board members have the option of pulling off of the consent agenda if they wish to discuss them or consider them individually. I recommend that the consent agenda listed below be approved as presented. Minutes of December 18th, 2018 reflection study session. Minutes of December 18th, 2018 business meeting. Minutes of January 15th, 2019 special meeting. Minutes of January 15th, 2019 work study session. Routine personnel, bid rejections, and bid awards. So, would any board member like to pull any of these items?
I would like to remove 5E, which is routine personnel from the board.
Okay, so Ben would like to remove 5E, the routine personnel. And, yes, Teresa?
I would like to remove F, bid rejections.
Okay. All right. So, let's then have a motion to approve the remaining items and then we'll go back to the ones we removed.
So, who?
So, just to be clear, things, Nancy, but, so we're going to approve A, B, C, D, and G. So, moved by...
H, I, J, K.
Oh, I'm sorry. H is Minnesota State High School League Foundation Form B Grant Request for North Tartan Adaptive Sports Transportation. I is Minnesota State High School League Foundation Form B Grant Request Tartan High School. J is bid calendars, and K is dispersments. So, we have A, B, C, D, G, H, I, J, K. So, I need a motion, a second, to approve those.
I'll second Nancy's motion.
Okay. Moved by Nancy's, or moved by Livingston, second by OJ. All in favor say aye. And all opposed say nay. Okay, so those items are approved, and then we'll go to E, routine personnel. And Ben, do you want to say anything about that?
I would just like to refuse myself as my name is...
That didn't sound very good, right? So, Kim, should we do E, or should we continue with F? Okay. So, just a motion and a second for approval of routine personnel without Ben. Without Ben's vote. So, I need a motion and a second. Moved by OJ.
Second.
Second by Anderson. All in favor say aye. And all opposed say nay. So, that is approved without Jarman's vote. Right? Okay. Next, we have F, bid rejections, and Teresa wanted to pull that.
Randy, could you, I mean, this is unusual, and I thought we should just point out what it is and what we're going to replace it with.
Sure. You know, as any project moves forward, you know, we take a look at what's happening. And our principals went to look at a new elementary school in Chaska, actually, Carver Elementary, which is a beautiful building. This is their second year there. They actually went over to look at their classroom furniture, how they use it, the new type of seating, you know, that we're looking at. And so, they were very impressed with the building. But at Carver Elementary, they have the lockers for the students inside the classrooms instead of out in the hallways. And they were very impressed with that. And just from a standpoint of being able to supervise dismissal, et cetera. And that actually helped us out with the project because we were looking at putting metal lockers out in the hallways and we're concerned about, you know, the width of the hallways. And so, after taking a look and working with LHB and our construction managers, you know, we decided to pull the lockers into the classrooms. So, I think it's a very positive change. And so, we have to reject the bids for the metal lockers. And we are not going to have to go out for a bid for what we're putting in the classrooms because it's under the $175,000 bid law. So, we're going to do requests for proposals for those lockers.
Thank you, Randy. Anything else on that one? So, can I get a motion, a second, to approve the bid rejections? Okay, moved by Anderson?
Second.
Second by Livingston. All in favor say aye. And all opposed say nay. Okay, that also is approved then. Next, we have reports. And we have the Student School Board Report. We have Kaitlyn Cromwell here from Tartan. And I know, Kaitlyn, I recently saw that you won an award for academic sports and arts. Do you want to tell us a little bit about what you won?
Yeah, it was the AAA award. So, it was for academics, fine arts, and then athletics. So, I'm in soccer. I was in softball. And then I'm in speech. And then I have a ball of like, I think it was like a 3.0 GPA. So, I was eligible for it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then Haley is not able to be here tonight from North. So, Kaitlyn, you're going to do the Tartan report as well as Haley's. Is that true? Okay, thank you.
So, then, starting with North, this week, North High is having ongoing celebrations for the annual snow days. This includes dress-up days, scavenger hunts, activities during reading hour, and a dance at the Lake Elmo Inn this upcoming Saturday. Students are excited to participate in events such as bingo, pep fest, and for the long anticipated dance. Winter sports have begun and students get the option to participate in basketball, Nordic, swimming, gymnastics, wrestling, and even karate this year. School choir has had a successful start to their season. In the past two competitions, they have earned third runner-up against competitive teams. Our school's concert choir and jazz band also participated in the Metro East Conference Band and Choir Festival. Tyson Sonic, a junior, has continually broken the school diving record over the past competitions. He has broken it three times since the start of the season. Nathan Huntley and Jaclyn Stump were awarded the North Minnesota State High School League AAA winners. This is a award for showing excellence in academics, athletics, and arts. We are proud of them for excelling in multiple fields and representing North High School. And then for Tartan, Tartan hosted the annual Tartan versus North basketball quadruple header two weeks ago. The event drew a huge crowd and everyone who attended had fun. Tartan's winter play, Lord of the Flies, begins on Friday at 7:00 PM. There will also be a Saturday evening performance at 7:00 and a Sunday matinee showing at 2:00 PM. For the first year ever, Tartan is offering free ACT prep classes during Saturday school for all interested juniors. Tartan teachers Amy Musel and Christian First hosted the first session this past Saturday where 53 students were in attendance and five Saturday sessions still remain. Saturday school at Tartan continues to be a success. Weekly attendance ranges from 40 to 70 students every Saturday. Saturday school participants receive one-on-one teacher support, complete test retakes, and participate in study groups or solo study sessions. Tartan DECA had an outstanding District 2 DECA conference last week. Our 25 DECA students won 32 awards and 22 students have advanced to the state conference in March. 90% of the chapter is advancing to the state conference and they are all very excited. It was one of Tartan's best-ever years for first, second, and third place trophies. Tartan BPA students also made us proud last week when they competed at the BPA Regional Conference and 17 of the 23 competitors were awarded a trophy. Tartan students placed 32 times, nine students placed in two or more events, and seven students came home with first-place trophies. Thank you.
Thanks, Kaitlyn. Nancy?
Thanks, Kaitlyn. Christine, do you think we could organize some achievement awards for the students that Kaitlyn mentioned, especially the AAA?
Absolutely. We'll be organizing lots of awards this year. And that's something that we've been working on this year to increase the number of school board recognition awards here. So, we'll be absolutely adding more to the agendas.
That'd be great. Thanks, Kaitlyn.
Anything else for Kaitlyn? Okay, thanks again. Next on the agenda, we have the superintendent Osorio's update on facilities.
All right. Good evening, Directors of the Board. I am going to take a few minutes to, we think we're getting a little feedback from one of the monitors here, so Josh is going to check those out while we're getting started here. You have in front of you, rather than a PowerPoint tonight, I'm actually giving you kind of a one-pager. It's got a front and back. And we're going to go through a little bit about where we're at with facilities work right now. Recently, we've been having a lot of conversations, as you know, about all the different kinds of options of work that we could possibly complete in our district, hopefully without a tax increase. Right now, we've been, every so often, we rerun the numbers. And I'll tell you this, they are constantly a moving target because at any point in time, there's always going to be slightly different numbers based on what we think construction costs are going to be and what we think... and what we think interest rates are gonna be, and all those different pieces that come into running our numbers. Throughout our entire conversation this past fall, we've been talking about, the fact that, uh, we have a lot of facilities debt that's coming off, and if I can find, oh, let me do this. A lot of facilities debt that's being paid off in our district. And we believe that, um, in the coming years, we actually have the ability to borrow new facilities debt up to 200, we've been saying between 200 and 250 million dollars, without increasing taxes. That would require a voter approval, that would require voters authorizing us to continue taxing at the rate that they're currently at for previous facilities debt, much of which was incurred back in the 90s when we built North High School and Skyview Community School. I've done a lot of presentations, um, around the entire district in the last couple of months, and I want to just point out to our viewing audience that those, that presentation, the latest version of it, is online on our district website. You can go there, you can watch the whole video of the last version of the presentation. And basically, we've been collecting a lot of community feedback from hundreds of participants about how people would feel about this proposed plan. Our proposal, as you may recall, we've had a lot of conversations about it, actually includes consolidating some of our schools. And that includes consolidating, I'm gonna scroll back up for just a minute here, several schools, which includes consolidating from three middle schools to two, closing Maplewood Middle School, and then closing Webster Elementary site, and actually building a couple of brand-new buildings on existing property that we own. And that would include a new building on the Eagle Point property and a new building on the Maplewood Elementary property. Both of those are sites where we own significant acreage, and we believe that, uh, we can get a lot more cost efficiency out of building new than renovating and retrofitting old buildings. And as you know from our previous conversations, we're learning a lot through our Phase One, um, construction projects, which include Castle and Richardson Elementary. Every time we get a little deeper into the project, there's some additional costs that kind of keep coming up, as you know, with any deep construction project. So our job right now is to decide what do we think we can possibly accomplish. We know that we can borrow up to, and the latest numbers as of this afternoon from our financial advisors, Ellers, is that we can borrow up to $225 million in new facilities bonds without raising our taxes right now as they sit. Now, our current projects that we have had, even, uh, riddled down versions to renovate all of our buildings and, um, provide secure entrances for every one of our schools, with school safety being our top priority, new furnishings, and, uh, renovating our middle and high schools, the project cost is really sitting right now around 275 million at the, at the minimum, between 275 and 300 million. So something our board's gonna be discussing in our next coming study session is, do we reduce the scope of our projects, or do we look at a slight increase? Um, and I've got a few numbers on the, on the docket for you to look at tonight. Tonight is not a night where we take any action on this, it's, again, looking at our latest numbers. We've been doing many conversations and collecting feedback and trying to figure out what can we accomplish with the dollars we have available, and what is our appetite for, um, whether we want to do a slight increase or we want to keep our taxes flat. As you know, we did a survey, we did a lot of studies of our survey results, and those will be, those are posted online as well. From Springstead Incorporated, we did a, uh, official survey to kind of test the waters to see what the viability would be for passing a facilities referendum in our school district. There was pretty strong support around the district, um, not only from parents of school-aged children, but also from, um, empty nesters and retirees who also see the value, of course, in investing in facilities for our school district. As you know, most of our buildings are more than 50 years old, and most have never had a truly comprehensive renovation in their lifetime. There've been small additions and improvements made, but not the kind of renovation we're looking to accomplish. So, um, this document, and this document is available online as well, on our district website, that kind of looks at all of the different proposals that we have on the table, um, the planned consolidation. And I'm gonna scroll down. In the latest version of this document, proposing Phase Two is that we would renovate all of our elementaries and middles with those consolidations and closures that I mentioned, and Phase Three would be the high school renovations. Now, we know that the, uh, elementary and middles could be accomplished without raising our taxes. We believe we can borrow enough money and keep our taxes flat to accomplish all of that. If we want to also improve the mid, the high schools with the plan, we would have to either consider leaving them out of the first proposal of our project, or we would have to look at a slight increase. And as you can see at the top of your page, um, an additional $50 million with our tax, taxpayers would cost the average family about $5 a month, um, because a large majority of that could be covered with the cost of taxes that are coming off of, off of our debt forecast right now. On the back of this page, and again, this is all posted online for people to look at, we included a kind of a glossary or a guide of what is being proposed for every site we currently have in our buildings, in our district right now. The number-one priority as we begin reorganizing our goals is safe and secure entrances at every single site. We know from our, uh, conversations with our community around us that school safety is of top priority for everyone. And in modern schools, a school, a safe entrance includes a school office that's located at the front entrance of the building and a double vestibule entrance, where traffic, visitor traffic can be funneled not only into the first set of doors, but then funneled into, directly into the school office before they're checked into the building, if they're gonna be an authorized visitor to the building. At the top of your page, on the far-right corner, you have a picture of what a double vestibule secure entrance does look like. The second piece that we've talked about is modern furniture, furniture that is ergonomically, um, helpful for our students who have to be in their classrooms all day long, they spend a large majority of their lives in those classrooms, and we want to provide different flexible seating options for all the needs of our learners and our adults that work in those environments as well. So, um, this, I think this document gives you kind of a big overview. I am not giving you the full facilities presentation tonight, I'm gonna leave that online, we'll have the link available for everybody. But I want to just kind of take a little bit of time to talk about comments and questions that we have. And as a reminder, our goal is to figure out what our appetite is going to be for moving forward with facilities planning, and what our timeline is gonna be. And those are gonna be really key conversations that are gonna happen at our February study session. They've been happening for months already with our school board meetings and our study sessions. But we have an upcoming work-study session in February, and we have a board retreat in February. And our goal is to really kind of pin down how we feel about how ready we feel to move forward, not only with the proposal that's on the table, but also what our, uh, our appetite is gonna be and our, our tolerance is gonna be for a, um, referendum campaign and, and a dollar amount if we choose to ask for an increase in taxes. So with that, what I really wanted to have tonight is some conversation. And so, uh, rather than take the time to talk at you this evening, I'd really like to open up the floor to see what kinds of comments and questions our board members have. And, and for our viewing audience, I think it's important to understand some of the kind of debates that we've been having internally and talk about that as well.
Okay, thank you. Teresa?
I won't be shy, Christine. On the back, proposed building changes, I got just a couple of questions. All of those buildings we own, with the exception of Next Step, is that correct?
Correct. Next Step is the one site that we lease.
So, I'm just curious, is there a reason we have to incur the cost to add the sec- I'm looking at Randy, 'cause I'm thinking it might go to Randy, but the secure entrances, are there any way that we could try to collaborate with the owner of the building to say, hey, this is what we need?
We certainly can, but I'm just gonna clarify, for Next Step, um, because Next Step's reception desk is located already right by the front entrance, Next Step is not a site we're looking at changing the footprint of the building. The increases in security for them would be technology-related, and so that would be a site that actually is not very expensive for us to update. And it would really be about more that psychol, um, the, the technology and the connectivity and communication with people who are coming in the front door. They already have a locked front door, and they already have that, uh, office desk area right there at the front door. For many of our sites where the costs are gonna be greater are gonna be the sites where the school office is inside the building somewhere, and it's not by the front desk.
And, and just kind of a comment in general, I really rallied around the Phase One because we, um, it was a different change in philosophy for us. We were taking a whole building and giving it a whole new look. And we weren't piecemealing things, and, and I've been on the board a long time, and we do a lot of projects and repeat a lot of the portions of projects we've already done because code changes or, or to get something new retrofitted or whatever. Um, and so I really, really rallied around, um, Phase One. Phase Two, uh, there's parts of this I completely, wholeheartedly will fall on a sword for. I mean, um, and parts of it I, I, I think need a little massaging. And parts of that include where we're not able to do whole buildings. And, and I'm okay with a phase, with a plan that might take us out to Phase Three or Phase Four. And so I think, I, I look forward to future conversations as a board to kind of carry on that conversation a little bit. And I also want to know where we can insert technology. I, I, I want to know, because I think as part of facilities, it's fundamentally important for, for, um, both security and for curriculum. And we kind of talk about that as well, and how do we embed that in, in a plan? Maybe not Phase Two, but where does it fit? I, I don't want to see a stop at Two without a clear direction on where we want the district to go. Those are just some of my kind of gut reactions to, I mean, and I want to thank you for the massaging of this and getting these updates. And I know time is of the essence if we're going to capture cost. As we, as you guys have gotten it nailed down real well. And I guess I wanted to say, too, we were at Castle earlier, and, um, as many of you know, that was my home district, or my home school, and I cried when I saw it the first time, not too long ago, 'cause it's not the building that I fell in love with, or my children did, because we've had to do things to it. And now, what, the plan for it and the transition, the, with minimal disruption to the staff and the excitement of the students, I think, is, has been very rewarding. And I'd like to see all of our buildings get that new look, so that's my two cents.
And I'll, I'll just respond a little bit, 'cause I think, Teresa, your questions are right on point. One of our challenges is, we have a lot of work that needs to be done with our facilities and our technology systems in our school district. Part of our decision-making, and as you all know, 'cause we've been talking about this for several months, is, do we have an appetite to go out to our voters for an increase? And our, our approach up till now has been to try to do as much as we can without doing an increase or a significant increase of taxes. And, um, I think that's something that we always have to weigh. As we know, it's not been super easy to pass, uh, increases in, in, uh, referenda here in this district. And so we want to be really mindful about what, what pieces do we want to bite off at a time? And I think one of the reasons why, um, the proposal is laid out as it is, there is no question, we are in dire need of technology. And, um, we've had many conversations, as you well know, 'cause we've talked about it as a board, too, about do we have one, two, three questions on the ballot? Do we just go out for one question and try to see if that goes through, and then come back out a little bit at a different time for some of the other pieces? And what's the, what's the appetite gonna be in our, in our community for, um, investing? What, our survey has shown us that there's definitely some, some viable support for people wanting us to reinvest in facility work. But to be perfectly honest, even, even this version of our plan here is, is pared down from some of the, the dreams and wishes that we had. For example, um, in order to kind of fit some of the projects into our budget, we know that, that our high schools, our, secondary schools in general are more expensive than elementaries. But trying to fit together the priority of school safety, along with just the academic, uh, instructional spaces that we really need to have. And so, um, putting things aside, like a new theater wing at Tartan, because honestly, and, and trust me, I'm a theater mom, so it's hard for me to even say that. But if we're trying to get secure entrances for all of our buildings, um, our thought has been, let's make that the priority first, and then we can kind of go back. But let's also design our buildings in a way that the future layers can be added into it without undoing some of the work that's already been done. So we already have a really comprehensive hundreds of pages of what we know needs to be done to our schools, so let's try to be very, very strategic about where we begin.
My concern, my concern, um, in the immediate, um, looking at this, and I apologize for not being in a previous work-study session where my questions might have been answered, but my first concern is, um, Next Step transition. That space is at capacity or, or overutilized now. And, and I think that we, we need to do, um, a good job of anticipating what the needs of our students and families are going to be. And what I see here is basically doing nothing with the Next Step, uh, space, other than a secure entrance, when, when the facility itself is not large enough to handle the students and the, and the types of, of needs that we have there. So that's my immediate, my immediate concern.
I could not agree more, but I'll just say a couple of things about Next Step. Next Step would be included in all the new furnishings and the, the new furniture purchases to help modernize the way we service our students, especially our students with special needs. Because, um, in a lot of cases, we're servicing our students with special needs with traditional furniture that isn't always meeting their needs. And so trying to make sure that they do get that renovation. Part of the issue we have with Next Step is that it is in a building that is leased space, it's not owned by our district. So as we kind of look to consolidations and renovations, obviously, we're gonna be thinking about, should Next Step be in a building that we own, rather than one that we lease? One of the challenges with that is that part of the work-based learning program that happens with Next Step, it, it thrives partly because it's in a nice little downtown that North St. Paul has. And as you well know, um, we don't have that same kind of a downtown feel in Oakdale or Maplewood, but, but North St. Paul actually has that, and there's some local businesses that have really supported our learners there. So, um, our, our priority has been, you're right, to invest in some of our spaces that we own, rather than a leased space in terms of changing the footprint of the building. But I do know that definitely on our horizon to think about is the future of, for example, Webster Elementary. If we're gonna close that site, we want to maintain the building because, A, it might be a good spot for some of our programming, it is on a bus line, it is a place that people can get to. And B, we also want to have a little bit of a, uh, release valve in the event that, for some reason, our enrollment ends up shooting way higher than we predicted. We also want to have a little, we don't want to lose all our property that we own until we see where the future's kind of rolling out for our school district, in terms of the number of school-aged children. But I think yours is a very valid point. And that's why, number one, we want, the sheer capacity of the building is a concern. But we do want to make sure they have modern, modern furniture, modern supports inside the building, and modern, um, security in the way that we want all of our schools to have. And given that that's kind of our priority for all of our sites that we're not changing the footprint for. For example, Cowan and Weaver are both sites that are, do not have a proposed change to their footprint, but they are schools where we want to make sure all of our learners are in safe, in secure environments, and that they are gonna have, um, the kind of modern furniture and flexible seating that we want to see happening in our learning environments. So, but your point is well-taken, and something we can be discussing again at our, at our work session next month.
Christine, one of the things that we have been talking about in some study sessions has to do with our tax base. So when we talk about, you know, if we were to go for an additional, um, how much that means or looks, that looks like for the residents, can you just talk about that a little bit?
Sure.
To explain, like, what our thought process has been.
So, one of the reasons why the numbers are always a little bit fluid is 'cause at any point in time, when you try to think about, if we go out for this amount of money, what would the impact be to our, uh, average homeowner? And in our district, an average home is about $200,000 in value, that's the average across our school district. Obviously, people who have, have higher-value homes or lower-value homes would have different, different, uh, amounts that they would contribute to this. But one of the things that always affects what the average homeowner has to contribute is the tax base. And in our district, and you hear a lot about this in the legislature right now, because there are districts that are property-poor school districts, and those that are property-rich school districts. Our district has been traditionally about average with the state of Minnesota. We've had a little bit lower, slightly lower than the state average for property value. But when you think about property value, you often think about commercial property, corporate property. And obviously, anybody who owns a business that, that's worth a million dollars or $5 million is going to pay a greater percentage of your property taxes than a, a family who owns a $100,000 home, if that makes sense. One of the wonderful things about our school district forecast is that our, our commercial property is growing, and we attribute quite a bit of it. There's new developments happening, of course, in, in Maplewood and Oakdale, and some pretty neat things on the horizon with North St. Paul. And a big portion of our commercial tax base comes out of the northern part of Woodbury. In the northern part of Woodbury, if you think about where all those stores and restaurants and hotels are all being developed, a, a large portion of those properties are in our school district boundaries. And that really helps the tax base of our community. And honestly, every year, we look at that number, and we have a, we work with our financial advisors to predict what our tax base is going to be worth. And in the last year, it's continued to exceed our expectations. And in other words, pulling the tax burden off of homeowners, which we're really thrilled about. And I will tell you, some of our colleagues in other districts have the opposite problem, and it's really, really difficult for them. So, yes, our tax base is growing, and the numbers that are presented for you to- So yes, our tax base is growing and the numbers that are presented for you tonight are given the, what we know our tax base to be at right now. So the percentage of all of this, there's a certain amount that's going to be, if we were to pass this dollar amount, whatever dollar amount we chose, a certain percentage of it's going to be picked up by corporate and commercial properties. And at this point, the trend is very clear that those are going to continue to increase in value and they're going to help our homeowners have less of a burden. Does that make sense? Did that answer your question? Thank you for bringing that up.
I just want to start by saying thanks for all the work you've done on that, you and your team. I've been on the board a long time and this is really kind of breathtaking. But as you say, we're, we have this opportunity because we've paid up all this debt and now we, we have, you know, this opportunity to do this. It's really kind of a jobs bill in a way, you know? Two hundred and twenty-five, more than $225 million in construction is, is a jobs bill for, that's got to be good for our community. But, you know, good for our students too. Just, just a couple of questions, and I know we're not making decisions tonight.
Correct.
And thanks for keeping us apprised. You know, as we make all these changes, I, I hope that, you know, we develop a really robust communication plan for, for parents and, and others, you know? If, if this can happen without people, you know, storming the boardroom, that would be good, you know? Because if they've been adequately involved, you know, I think we, I think it can happen, you know? Then that's kind of a broad, broad view of it. But also, you know, Webster was, is in my neighborhood. And so that's where my three kids went to school. And like Teresa with her homeschool, I have an affection for Webster. But, you know, we're not elected by wards here. We have a whole, right? We, we have the whole district in mind as we sit on this board. So what, what is the, the plan for, what programs are we thinking about for, for Webster? And don't, and it's set up as a very traditional elementary school and we're not going to use it as a traditional elementary school. So are we going to turn it, you know, into something vastly different or what?
Excellent question. One of our goals throughout this entire process, and, and this has gone through many iterations, as you all well know, we've been having conversations for quite some time. Our goal is not to leave any building just sitting there vacant. It's an eyesore, it's not good for the community, and we want high-quality properties around each of our, within each of our neighborhoods. One of the things that we're going to be looking at with Webster is, once we get through some of the other phasing, and one of the, we do not want to demolish that building, although we, we've thought about it with other projects. But we want, like I said, we want to keep a little bit of a release valve in case we need the extra space for enrollment. But there's all kinds of projects that long-term could be reconsidered. Once we get through some of the major renovations and construction, we're going to want to be thinking about where does our district education center land? Right now, we're sitting on a piece of property that is connected to North High School, which is entirely landlocked and on a very, very small piece of land. So long-term, we definitely would probably be thinking about where, where might our current offices and this existing boardroom be relocated? That's something on our horizon. We always want to think about our leased spaces such as next step. What would we end up doing with those? Also, programs such as our Harmony programs, our adult GED and ESL programs and our senior citizen programming are all, all programs that we're going to want to look at longer term. We wanted to begin with our traditional schools first to kind of make sure that we had those spaces renovated. We want to make sure our students are in air-conditioned environments wherever possible. Next step again is already air-conditioned. People working here are in air conditioning. But how do we make those, all students in comfortable and safe learning environments first? But I think there's going to be a lot of conversations about district programs. It could be adult programming, it could be special needs programming that need more space. It could be our district education center. All of those are going to be options on the table. One of the reasons why they're not in this plan yet is that we really thought long and hard about it, because we've had draft versions that include a phase four or a phase five. We also want to don't get so far ahead of ourselves that we're not able to monitor and adjust. I think it was Steve who said early on in this process, let's make sure whatever plans we make, we can monitor and adjust them based on some, some data that might change along the way. And so it's certainly important to think long-term, but I don't, we don't have that pinned down yet. But those are all conversations on the table and really important ones to have.
Do you envision that, that Webster will be unoccupied for a while?
Perhaps a short time, but I think that there's enough need in our district for space that, that it wouldn't take very long before we'll have some programming in there that's going to want that space. Because we have a lot of programs throughout the district that are feeling tight.
Well, for example, next step.
Exactly. I mean, absolutely.
And Webster is on a bus line.
It is. It is, absolutely.
And not far from downtown.
Right, exactly. And that's not something we would want to make a decision about without really deep conversations with the families and staff at next step.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to know real quickly what kind of input the teaching staff has in these building plans. I hear a lot about how the, the district center staff is helping out and making a lot of plans. But going to Castle today, I had a chance to hear from the principal, how she has some input. I'd like to hear what kinds of things that the teaching staff is putting in on this, because they're the people that are actually going to be in the space, using it day in and day out.
Great question. All throughout the process, one of our, our top priorities has been that our principals are at the table when decisions are made. And I'll tell you, it's, it's been a time strain on our principals because it's such a big, important factor. But we don't want people outside of a school environment making decisions. And so our principals all along the way have been able to pull together groups of teachers anytime decisions are made. Whether it's about color palettes of what's being chosen, a perfect example is in our earlier phases of planning for Castle and Richardson, we had decided that we were not going to put carpet in these schools because there's a lot of concern about carpet with indoor air quality, right? We want to keep clean, healthy breathing environments and all of that. And we had these plans rolling and our principal said, hold up, we need to have a conversation. And we sat down with a whole bunch of teachers and they said, no, we want carpet in our classrooms, especially in an elementary school. And our thought was, well, we can buy those big cute colorful rugs and students can sit in those rugs and do reading corners. And repeatedly, teachers said, they're not big enough. We need to be able to have kids sitting on the floor. It's elementary school in different parts of our, our classrooms. And in the end, we said, okay, teachers know what they need. And, and I'll tell you what we agreed upon, a compromise is that we came to. All high-traffic areas like hallways and gymnasiums and cafeterias and all that, of course, are going to be hard surfaces and not carpet. If you walk into Castle right now, even the hallways are carpet and that gets really gross, especially in the wintertime. And the other thing we agreed upon is that the carpet's going to be modular. So you know those tiles, those square tiles that come together? So if you ever do have a piece of soiled carpet that just can't get the stain out, we can swap it out for a new piece of tiled carpet. And all of that plan came from our teachers because they were very clear. And it wasn't just at one site, both Castle and Richardson teachers came together on that. We've had a lot of conversations about furniture. Our board members just earlier this evening had the opportunity to visit some new, the new furniture design at Castle. And we purposely put them in a couple of classrooms, some of the new design furniture, to let them try it out. And, and the teachers are rotating through to get experience with the different kinds of flexible seating and furniture to tell us, you know, this looks really great in the catalog, but in reality, it doesn't work for our students. And vice versa, we need more of this and this has become really popular with the students. And so it's all about not just buying hundreds of thousands of dollars of furniture and putting it in a school, it's putting some batches in there so the teachers can try it out with the students and tell us what they think and what they like about it. And that has been really helpful because, you know, any one of us, I could say, well, I was a teacher one time and I was, and I know what I would like. But unless I'm working with students today, you've got to put students in the chairs. What, something looks good in a catalog doesn't necessarily mean it's the right thing for the kinds of work that we're doing. So those are just a couple of examples, but every step of the way, we've been really, really mindful to try to make sure that our teachers have a voice in the planning. And at the end of the day, it's, it's their space with their students that they're in. Another one, I'll just say quickly, they have repeatedly said, we need more bathroom stalls, we need more bathrooms. And so that's been a top priority with all of our construction projects as well.
You know, Ben, your question reminds me, on the first day of school, I went to Richardson Elementary and one of the women who worked in the cafeteria said to me, I'm so excited about the remodeling and they're actually remodeling the kitchens the way we said we wanted them. So she felt like she was being heard.
That's true. We're talking to kitchen staff, special education staff, really getting input from all the people that live in these environments day to day. Other questions? This is really big decision-making, it's heavy lifting, it's a lot of change, it's pretty scary. And we want to do it right. We don't want to be the kind of district where we get together in a small room and roll out these plans and do it to our constituents instead of with the voices of our stakeholders. And I think that's part of, I've actually had feedback as, just recently, a couple different times today saying, are we done with the feedback yet? When are you going to make a decision? And I keep saying, you know, we really need to hear from our constituents and we need to know what people like about the plan. And, and tonight's version that you saw us talk about has tweaks and edits in it, you know? It's been revised. And, and I think part of going through it a few different times and tweaking it, editing and revising it, I really, really wish that we could just easily add another $50 million without a tax increase. But that's going to be a difficult decision we're going to have to make together. That's a conversation we're going to have to have. And all of people's opinions and thoughts and ideas help us shape the best plan possible. It's amazing to me that we've been on the road talking about this plan for, for months. In fact, if you go back to last year when we started with, should we save room in our middle, elementary spaces by moving fifth graders to middle school? And we had all those community meetings. And at the end of the day, we decided, no, there was good support for it, but there was enough people with concerns that we went, no, we're going to put the brakes on that plan. And we changed the plan and we went back to the drawing table and we found some new options for us. It's, I think it says a lot that with the number of meetings we've been having, that we didn't have a long line at public comment today. And I'm not saying public comment's a bad thing. I think we actually continue to want people to come and share their thoughts. But we've been getting a lot of online feedback, a lot of written feedback, many emails sent into our office saying, have you thought about this? This is the other question. And at the end of the day, we're going to have to just take the feedback we have and make the decisions that we can make, understanding that if something changes on our horizon, we have to also be able to have, as we talked about, some ability to change direction if we need to.
Teresa? You have dates on here. You have proposed phase two, 2020, 22, and then of course, proposed phase three. Talk a little bit about when you would like the board to make a decision on a referendum or bond. And let's say we do and it passes, how soon do we get the money and when would construction?
Great question. So one of the things, if you look at that potential timeline, that's very, very hypothetical at this point, because there's so many moving parts and variables involved in this. That timeline draft there assumes that we would consider going out for a potential referendum, bond referendum this coming spring in May. Now, if we choose we don't want to do that and we're not ready for that, that can get delayed. The challenge is that high, a lot of construction activity happens in your summer months when you don't have school. You make a lot of construction progress. So a delay between May to November isn't just a delay of five months, it's actually a lot longer than that because you lose a summer. But that doesn't mean we make decisions that way. We want to make the right decisions, not rush decisions. But I will be saying, I will be suggesting to the board that when we talk in, in February and in our upcoming meetings and conversations, that I'm going to want to hear from board members if you feel confident about going out in, in November. I mean, sorry, in May of this year, rather than waiting until November. I've done a lot of meetings and a lot of feedback and I feel that we've been getting some very strong support across all different stakeholder groups for being able to do that. That said, we have to decide together. We've got to look at all of our variables and that's going to be the heavy work that we have in our upcoming meetings. And if we don't feel ready to do that, then we, we wait and we revise the plan again. So that's kind of where we're at. That's why we're talking about this publicly. Everything's online, so people can provide feedback and input with that as well. But if everything were to go with that shorter timeline, if we were to go out this spring, the earliest you would see the changes in boundaries, the changes in students changing location into the new settings would be fall of '22. And that's, that's slightly optimistic. I mean, there could be delays along the way that we haven't thought about and that's a fairly optimistic timeline, but I think it's realistic at this point in time with the information that we've been given. So obviously, when you get into these projects, sometimes they have uncovered, you know, there's, there's unknown entities that you bump into.
Oh, just one more sort of comment about the new furniture. When I was a kid in elementary school at Groveland Park Elementary in St. Paul, in the McAllister Groveland area, we had ink wells and we had seats that were connected to our desks by some kind of iron thing. And we had a cloakroom. So we're, we're having none of that now. Education has changed.
Very different.
Now, you know, the kids can roll around on these little, on these backless sort of stools, right? And, you know, there's research as far as how, you know, kids learn and we're not as locked step as we were back then. So anyway, I, I, I think that, you know, I was pleased to see this, this newer, comfortable, you know, flexible furniture that we're, we're buying for everybody. Because that is one of your changes that you've made along the way, is new furniture for all the schools.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
And, and just to add to what you just said, Nancy, just to be clear, the new furniture that's being selected is not chosen because it's pretty or just cute or fun or gimmicky. It's really, there's a lot of brain research that goes into that. And many of our teachers, I think of Carver Elementary right now, we have teachers that on their own are picking up innovative little pieces of furniture at IKEA and different places to try to add that flexible seating options into their classrooms. Flexible furniture. We want to make sure that what we're picking up is commercial grade. It's not just things that teachers are picking up off their own money and spending in, in stores to try to give that flexible seating option. But there's such a awareness right now about how young minds are developed and the kind of right-brain, left-brain activity and the ergonomics of, of learning that go into it that we have, even without us investing in this as a district, our own teachers are often investing in these changes and shifts themselves, many times with their own dollars out of their own pocket. And not a slam against IKEA, by the way. We all love IKEA, but it's not commercial grade. It's meant for home and personal use. Go ahead.
And just as a follow-up, I mean, I just love going into our schools, Castle today. You know, you just, it's very kid-centered, you know? It's not, and you just get that warm feeling about how they're, they're really doing all this work with, with the kids and their various abilities and skillsets in mind. So, but no more cloaks, cloakrooms. We were always ordered to go into the cloakroom and put our coats over our heads for the, for the bomb scare, the bomb drill. Not doing that anymore. That's a good thing.
But you just heard that we're actually looking at cubbies in the classrooms instead of hallway lockers. So it's almost like taking a step back toward cloakrooms.
Yeah, a little bit, a little bit more like a cloakroom, but yeah, no more cloaks.
That's right. No one's wearing cloaks anymore.
I just want to make one really general statement about the work that's been done. I think that the support in all of our communities, as far as public education is concerned, revolves around the neighborhood support of our elementary schools and our grade schools. I know several people on the school board have spent a great deal of time in parent groups raising money and doing things like that. And that happens because people feel an intense connection to their neighborhood school. And I think that this idea of bringing in as many stakeholders as we can and reviewing these changes over and over and over again, makes people feel connected to the changes. Even though the buildings will be new, the connection, I think, will still maintain that neighborhood feel because anyone who wants to be connected to this process has many opportunities to share their ideas and get involved. And I just want to commend you for taking that approach because that's not the easy, the easy way to do this kind of thing. So.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that I have an opportunity to commend the staff for taking the time to listen to everyone who wants to have a voice in this.
Thank you. I'm just going to add too, many of our conversations at some of these community meetings, some of the meetings have gone on for hours. I mean, lots of conversation. And sometimes the conversation, especially when you're talking about a school closure or consolidation, is how do we make sure any child who might have to change schools feels welcomed into the new community? And then the conversation with some of our parent groups has evolved into, well, if we have to merge two different PTOs or PTA groups in different schools, how do we make sure everyone feels a part of the community and welcomed? And there's already some budding energy about how to do it well. And the nice thing is, when you're talking about thing is, when you're talking about three, four years down the road, you can actually take time to plan it well. And that's our goal.
Okay, thanks very much. And again, like others have said, thanks so much for all of your work on this and everyone else who's been involved. And I agree with Steve that it's so great that we're using this, the approach that we're using. So
Thank you.
Thanks again. Next, we have Assistant Superintendent Troy Miller in Carver Elementary.
Right. Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Gina Abramson, Carver Elementary Principal. She's going to highlight some of the great things happening over at Carver. As you know, Carver is a very special place. Numerous staff are here with her. So I'm going to turn it over to Gina and her team.
We are so thrilled to be here to share with you what we're doing at Carver. My name is Julie Cambrown, and I am one of the intervention staff at Carver Elementary. And I just want to start out by sharing Carver's vision, which is every student will meet and exceed literacy, math, and science benchmarks prior to entering middle school.
My name is Tana Nelson, and I'm one of the first grade teachers at Carver. I will share with you Carver's mission statement, which is, Carver Elementary School's purpose is to meet the needs of all learners through a respectful, responsive, safe, and caring learning community. Our students will become lifelong learners and responsible citizens prepared to excel in our ever-changing world.
Good evening. I'm Jen Marty. I'm the instructional coach at Carver Elementary. And this is my first year at Carver, so I'm very excited to come and be a part of North St. Paul. The data that's in front of you right now, I think is connected, it is connected to our three areas that we are assessed on through the MCA, which is our Minnesota Comprehension Assessment Test. Grades three through five are assessed, and three, four, and five are assessed in math, science, and reading. And our fifth graders take the science test. And the four categories that you see before you in the yellow, lighter yellow, and pale blue, students are grouped into does not meet, partially meets, meets and exceeds. And you see a line that's the Carver line and the district average. And in science, or excuse me, in reading, we had 61% exceed or meet, which was above our district average. And in math, 74% of our students exceeded or met, which was above our district average. One of the things that I'm so proud to do, and I think an instructional coach has a big part of is, and led by Dr. Abramson, is the work we do with our adults is really what impacts our student achievement. And Dr. Abramson really leads that work, and our staff is really committed to their own learning. So very proud to do that.
Hi, and I'm Stephanie Lindy Kugel. My role at Carver is Check and Connect Program Specialist. And I just wanted to mention, in addition to our MCA achievement data, we do collect information on attendance and behavior. And that also impacts greatly our achievement and also speaks to our climate and culture. Our attendance and behavior are entered into campus, the campus program by our behavior staff. Behavior data is sent out monthly to staff for grade level and CT planning. And it is also used to determine interventions through our MTSS process. We looked at a lot of our behavior data to see where students are needing intervention, especially in the behavior area. And personally, I use behavior and attendance data constantly because that is what Check and Connect, we use those, that information to determine student need for those programs. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Imstall, first grade teacher at Carver. What you see now is our Carver Cares, and I think that just speaks to our climate down at Carver. But it really stands for cooperation, assertiveness, responsibility, empathy, and self-control. And those are just kind of our guiding rules or principles that we just live by and that we work on every day with our kids and just in our classrooms and then in the bigger, in the bigger picture of Carver. So Carver Cares.
Hi, I'm Kristen Blanchley, a kindergarten teacher at Carver Elementary School. And I get to talk about our student climate, culture, and behavior at Carver. We've got a lot of things listed here. I'll just go briefly over some of the highlights. We have leaders, and we try to make sure that all of our students have a chance to have a leadership role. What's really great about our new math curriculum is that every day there are student leaders. So that means 100% of our students get to be leaders in the classroom, which is great. We also have lots of other opportunities for them to be leaders at our all-school meetings that we have every month. Morning announcements, our fourth grade team rotates between classrooms for the students to give morning announcements every morning after our second bell has rung. And they talk about the lunch schedule, our, what date is in our rotation, we say the Pledge of Allegiance on Mondays. And then they also include any special announcements. And I know that in kindergarten, it's a really great way to get the kids involved in what's going on in school and getting them ready with that routine every morning. Our patrols, we have our fifth graders are selected to be patrols for walkers and also for our bus patrols. And then we also have patrols that are stationed in the hallways to make sure that they're walking in those really rough transition times in the morning. We have talked about being kindness ninjas at Carver School. That was initiative that we had a couple years ago. And it's still really a great phrase to get our kids involved in being kind in our anti-bullying programs. Like I said, we have all-school meetings every month, once a month, we get together as a whole school and have a meeting. Each month is led by a different grade level, and they're also sometimes led by different staff. Like our intervention staff led our last all-school meeting this past month, which was really great. Buddy rooms, we match up buddy rooms with a younger grade and an older grade to do things together, like art projects or just reading. I know my class is sharing with our second grade buddies next week with our, with our writing project we just finished, and then their writing project they're finishing. So it's a great way to get involved with other grade levels. Our fifth grade team does a great job assisting our pre-K that we just got this past year, or a year before this current school year. And so they're working well with our, with our pre-K kids, kind of getting them excited about being at Carver, and just also helping out with those things that our pre-K kids need. And then our fourth grade team does a great job also helping with kindergarten. When those lunch baskets get really heavy, our kindergartners are just not strong enough to carry them. So we're really grateful for our fourth grade team who works diligently every day to make sure that our kindergarten lunch baskets get taken downstairs.
Hello, I'm Mary Gamash. I'm a kindergarten teacher. And we have a little collage here of some things that are great about Carver. You can see some of the kids in the hallway practicing their Carver Cares. We have a family enjoying our family night and connecting with other families. Some of our older students are doing kindness and chalk. They created a beautiful welcoming collage outside our school. One of our community service projects was raising funds for hurricane relief, and the kids are holding a large check there. Our Carver fifth grade choir works very hard all year, and there's a picture of them performing at our Veterans Day program, and they put on an amazing performance. Our kids are truly enjoying our brand-new playground, which is fabulous. And some kids having some outdoor learning in our courtyard that has been spruced up, and they love going out there and doing reading and even some science projects. And then finally, our last group there, they're enjoying their intervention time, where the students, well, they usually enjoy their intervention time. So it's an opportunity for them to work in a small group atmosphere and really get the type of instruction that can only be given in a small group. So those are just some of the great things happening at Carver.
Hi, I'm Libby Tobaca, and I teach kindergarten as well. And some of the other things that we're really proud of at Carver are, we really work hard to meet all the academic needs and the social needs of our kids. We have chess intervention. We have lunch buddies. We have different, you know, we have our MTSS that meets every week, and we can talk either about academic needs or behavior needs. And that's a really pretty well-oiled system. We have welcoming schools in Ovea, which we were one of the first schools in the district to really take that on. And our culture at school is, you know, really behind that. We have mini-meetings with all of our teachers and our intervention staffs every six weeks where we determine whether or not kids are getting the right kinds of interventions. And as a matter of fact, our targeted interventions today, we just started a brand-new cycle. And I know that when we split up, my 22 kids went 10 different places. So we're, oops, we're really working hard to give them a lot of different options of ways that we can meet their needs. And during those targeted interventions, we are progress monitoring them too. So everything that we do is really, you know, works with the data or we're using that data to help us. And then we just, we have a brand-new instructional coach this year, and she brings us a lot of new ideas and a lot of other background. And we're just really fortunate to have her. So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sheila Scaff, and I'm just going to continue on with what we're proud of. I'm also a kindergarten teacher at Carver. And so another thing that we're proud of is family night. Some of you have probably been to some. But at Carver, we feel it's important to bring in families for fun in a pressure-free evening, where they're welcome into the school, where they have a positive experience. We often give them a free meal. They have make-and-take crafts for reading, math, other things. We're proud of ongoing staff learning. We often continue to learn about new curriculum we have adopted, as well as new staff comes in and needs to be trained, or we just touch up and brush up on what we do have. We're also proud about teachers planning together. When you plan together, you work smarter, not harder, we like to say, but also because we think of the kids in our grade as all of our kids. And so we can work on anything that's struggling or anything that we want to celebrate together when we do that. We have community connections like the Lutheran Church of Peace and 3M who donate supplies and time. And we have staff stepping up to take leadership roles. So again, having many ideas and perspectives is going to help to have great things come about. And then also, we're proud of our culturally and linguistic responsive teaching. In case you don't know what that means, it's basically a framework to enable us to change our mindset about how students are viewed culturally and linguistically. And in turn, this gives all our students a learning environment where they feel validated, valued, and are taught to adapt to different situations.
First of all, I want to say thank you to everybody who came with me. It really means a lot that I put it out and got so many people that responded that said they'd come. I have the last four bullets, and I kind of chose it that way. Mindfulness, responsive classrooms, restorative practices, and then hard-working and dedicated staff. These bullets, what's beautiful about them is this staff does it so well, but they've also worked really hard with other schools in our district to really have that cohesiveness and learning together with all nine elementaries. So no matter which elementary the kids are in, they can get that same experience. So we've worked really hard as a staff with those three bullets and then with other elementaries. But everybody says to me, what's that magic bullet? Why is Carver so successful? And it's the people behind me. It's the staff. This is all pictures of adults in the building because we need to have fun, and we need to balance our work-life, and we need to like to be with each other. And I think that the staff does an amazing job of that. And again, we would not, magic bullet is the staff. They go above and beyond. They like to be with each other. They like to be with kids. They're all about ISD 622. And I am very fortunate. I'm very grateful, and I'm very lucky to have such a wonderful, wonderful staff. So thank you for having us.
Any questions coming? Teresa?
Gina, I still picture you in the halls of North High. What you've done to Carver has been remarkable, and I give you credit that you've given it to your staff. But one of the things that stands out is that you guys do like a false song. I think the songwriter is there.
That middle picture.
How can you not be jazzed by that? And, but how you twist all of those participants is pretty incredible. And so, I mean, I've seen it on Facebook. I've seen it all over. So, yeah, I think that's really unique. But, and it's been out there for a while. But great job, and thank you all for staying this late and participating.
Thank you.
I just want to say thanks for taking the time to come. I'm really impressed that you all came, gave up your time. I'm also struck by how, what a range of personalities you all have. I mean, and that's great. I mean, some of you are obviously quiet and thoughtful, and others, you know, are more outgoing and so on. And that's, and that's fine because our students come in all shapes and sizes and respond to different styles, right? Am I right about that? Yeah. So, but it's great that you could all come together on the values. And I'm very impressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again. I'm echoing what everyone's saying before. I also wanted to say too, Gina, you made a comment at the end that your staff freely goes out to other elementary schools and shares what you are doing. I hear so much about the success at Carver and the fact that you're giving that to the other schools in the district, that you're sharing your secrets or your successes is really going above and beyond. So thanks for doing that.
And the other schools share their gifts with us as well, too. So it's a nice give and take.
I'm just going to add that I just have to say that Carver is so much fun to visit and be a part of. And I just thank you for the joy you bring every day because it really is contagious. When you walk in the building, you really feel it. And, you know, your energy is, it's often said around here that at Carver, you teach bell-to-bell. You don't lose any instructional time. You know, you're squeezing in every minute you can before kids get on those buses. And I'm sorry, you're the latest dismissal in the district, and your buses are late sometimes. But we're working on that. So thank you for everything you're doing.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. I always get excited when I hear about organizations and businesses that work with our schools. And so I just wanted to hear just a little bit about like the time and also the donations that like LCP and 3M kind of give to Carver.
Right. Last year, we split 3M with a bunch of different schools where they came in over their lunch breaks, and they worked with small groups of students at Carver. Lutheran Church of Peace does a number of things. They help run our backpack program for students who need additional food at home. They provide earbuds for students who can't afford them that need them. They support us with all of our events where families come in. So they do a number of things, and we're really grateful to partner with them.
Fantastic.
And they also do a peace award at the end of the school year. Each grade gets to pick, classroom gets to pick one student. And a lot of the classrooms, the students vote on who the peace award goes to, and they donate a little gift to them.
Thank you. And I just had a quick question about the metallic-looking office that you had.
I always say you know your staff really loves you when it takes them three hours to aluminum foil your office for your birthday. And it took me another hour and a half to take it down.
Oh, no. I like it.
Again, we work hard, we play hard.
Okay, thanks again. And I was glad that you told us that they all volunteered to come.
I'm she.
But you started off with your vision and mission, which I loved because they were really well-aligned to the district's strategic plan. And I love that the bar was so high with your vision, that you wanted every student to meet those benchmarks. And I know that's so hard, but it's what we want, right? So I love that. Can you remind me what Check and Connect is?
Mary, briefly, Check and Connect, at the microphone.
Check and Connect is a program that's actually district-wide. There are Check and Connect specialists at each building site. And what we do is we connect with students that seem to be at risk or showing early signs of risk factors for non-graduation. Things like poor attendance, excessive office discipline referrals. So, and we work one-on-one with those students to kind of mitigate and work also with the families, too, which is also a huge connection, is getting the families involved in helping the students be more successful. So.
Great, thank you. Okay. Anything else? So thanks again, you guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we have Human Resources and Julie Coffey with an insurance update.
Chair, Yonah, Superintendent Osorio, members of the board. Our medical insurance won't be nearly as exciting as kindness ninjas at Carver, but I will work hard to make it seem like it. So we are, on the keyboard, oh, got it. So we are in, have started our med- So we are in, have started our medical insurance renewal process and so I wanted to take a few minutes tonight just to talk to you, give you an update on that process, the timeline, and just remind you of a few things. We will be bringing this on the March 26th Board meeting for approval. So I wanted you to just have a little bit of reference before that, before that meeting. Oops, went too far. So again, the Health Insurance Transparency and Accountability, or HITA, defines really what the process that school districts need to follow for insurance renewal. We work with a company called USI, formerly known as Wells Fargo, and they provide consulting services to us in terms of all of our insurance. So they will work with us very closely on, once we get the bids in for their insurance renewal, going through and really taking a deep dive into the information that's provided and getting it back to us in some information that's easily readable and that we can understand. Our insurance committee is also heavily involved in this renewal process. And just as a reminder, our insurance committee is comprised of members of all of our bargaining groups as well as our non-unit staff. And they, we meet about once a month during the year and a little bit throughout the summer. And that committee helps guides the work of our insurance renewal process and helps make a recommendation as well. So a little bit about HITA, that was passed in 2014. It really defines a process that school districts need to go through, whether you're self-insured or fully insured, in terms of how you get the bids, how you open the bids, how you finalize the process. And the intent of it was really to create some transparency and accountability in that bid process. The idea, I think, being that it would result in more competitive bids. I'm not sure that that's been the overall effect and the legislature has done some work over the years to try to make some changes to this law, but that was the idea behind it. I'm not going to go over these, but just, these are just a handful of the requirements of HITA. So just so you have an idea that there is a lot involved in this and a lot of steps we need to take, a lot of processes that we have to follow in order to make sure we're following these key HITA requirements. I did want to share with you the timelines so you'd know where we're at. We have put our RFP out. We have done our advertising as required under HITA. Next week, we will open our proposals. We suspect that we will get listed there. Health Partners, Medica, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Preferred One, United Healthcare, and then Aetna, Alina will all bid. And so we'll open those bids next Monday. We'll take it back to USI. They'll go through it all, put it back together for us, and then in February, our insurance committee will review the bids. If we need, sometimes we go back to the carriers and ask for kind of a best and final offer on bids. We may have finalist meetings, particularly if we're looking at using a new carrier other than Health Partners that we currently use. And then on the March 18th, Insurance Committee will finalize our recommendation and the budget rates and will bring that back for Board action on March 26th. Our renewal effective date is July 1st, so there's a little bit of time between the Board action and July 1st. And that is because if we would make any changes, particularly if we would change carriers, we need a really good chunk of time in order to make that change. We also have our open enrollment process during that time where people could make changes to their insurance plans as well. And then just a couple considerations that we always look at. If we are going to change any of the aggregate value of benefits, we are required under Minnesota statute to get the vote in agreement by all of our bargaining units. So that's something we do need to think about as we go through this process. We're always looking at any changes to state and federal healthcare laws that might be happening. Nothing right now that's on the horizon, but always subject to change. And then the new piece this year is United Healthcare is not new to Minnesota, but it is new to selling coverage in the Minnesota marketplace and we do suspect United Healthcare will bid on our RFP. And so, curious to see how that will play out and what type of competitiveness that will result in with our other carriers as well. So those are a couple of the new things happening. Oops. Any questions?
Julie, thank you. I had no idea you went through all this. I mean, I know your group met, but, but I'm curious, two things. One, if you're getting a sealed bid, are you obligated to take the lowest then? Or can you, I mean?
We are not, no. We have to have, under HITA, we have to have written criteria that we need to follow. So it doesn't necessarily, often it is the lowest, but not necessarily. I would say there's two big things that we will look at. One is provider disruption. So what's really generally, really, really important to employees is they get to stay with their current physician or their current clinics. And so, any, any plan that would change that and disrupt that is always a big deal. And then the cost of premiums. So it might be, it might be a lower-cost plan, but have significant provider disruption and therefore, we may not look at that.
And then the other question I had is, if you do a January, or I mean, a July through June, the rest of America for healthcare goes July 1, January 1 to December. So do you end up with, you know, lots of people that, do you try to wait to hire them or, so that they're not in between what could be two different plans? And, you know what I mean? Because you don't, if the plan doesn't start till July 1, but if you hire them in June, are you?
Well, our, our insurance plan starts July 1, but your coverage as an employee would start the day that you're hired.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
It's just that if we're going to make any change, though, changes go into effect July 1.
And they run until June of the following year.
Yep, yep.
So if this came about, that we were to change from Health Partners, how does that impact the clinic?
That's a good question. I suspect, and I wasn't there when the clinic was established, and maybe Randy would have some information on this, but I would suspect that we could keep a clinic as long as a new carrier is able to support that model, that the clinic itself could still maintain its existence just under a new carrier.
It may be Health Partners as well. Remember, we do bids for that clinic also. So they're totally separate and independent from the actual administration of our health plan. So, yeah.
Great, thank you very much, Julie. Okay, next we have action items. So from the business office, we have Becky Navy is going to do acknowledgement of contributions.
Thank you, Michelle. Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district, request donations or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. On that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, the Director of Business Services recommends the following resolution. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 622, that the School Board accept with appreciation the following contributions and permit their use as designated by the donors. Julie Corewashed, apologize for that, sweatpants and snowpants, Castle Elementary for student use. ISD 622 cooks, winter hats and mittens and gloves to Harmony Learning Center, student use. We have many donations tonight for Meals on Wheels, the first of which is from Jim Fitzpatrick for $500 in memory of Gigi Fitzpatrick. Paul and Pam Woodward, $47. Nancy Johnson, $50. James and Teresa Falconbridge, $94. The North St. Paul VFW, $1,350, $500. Dave and Christine Anderson, $50. Phyllis Kish, $47. Ruth Paisley, $25. Jerry and Maggie Hansen, $100. Kathy Langsniss, $100. Lori Rothmund, $50. Judy and Richard Steenberg, $25. Sheryl Geisper, $500. LeAnn Sepala, $94. And Randy Edmanson, $45. We also have a donation from Transport Express, $650 to the Webster Elementary Holiday Gift Program. Medtronic Foundation, $300 to the Weaver Field Trip Support. City of Maplewood Charitable Gambling Donation, $2,000 to the Weaver Deep Portage Field Trip. EcoLab, $68 to the Weaver Field Trip Support. Barbara McNeely, UG Boots for Richardson Student Use. Connie Hall, Wool Coat and Gloves for Richardson Student Use. Alan and Marie Nguyen, $100 to the Harmony ABE Scholarship Fund. Administrative Freedom LLC, $200 to Carver Elementary Negative Lunch Balances. North Suburban Evening Lions Club, $250 to the Harmony K-12 Playground Fund. Karen Nyberg, $200 to Maplewood Middle School Negative Lunch Balances. Bobby and Gregory Bigwood, $2,000 to Tartan High School. Hans Wold, School Supplies to Richardson Elementary. Sharon Langvin, Coats, Snowpants, Boots, et cetera, to Richardson Elementary. St. Paul Firefighters Local 21 Union, $1,000 to the Tartan Knowledge Bowl. And Leanna Glenn, Gloves to Richardson Elementary. This brings our total fiscal year 2018-2019 monetary contributions to $62,545.34. I would like to move with great appreciation acceptance of these donations.
Okay, thank you. So moved by Becky, can I get a second? Or moved by Navy?
Second.
Second by Anderson. All in favor, say aye. Aye. And all opposed, nay. So that is approved. And again, thank you very much to all those generous donors. And thank you, Becky. Next, we have Teaching and Learning. We have Peter Mau with a resolution for the revision of the 2018-2019 school calendar.
Chair Yonar, Directors of the Board, as you know, we are in the midst of Phase 1 of our facilities plan at Richardson and Castle. And we have quite a bit of work to do yet this summer. And those schools have quite a bit of packing to do in order to get ready for that construction. And so you have before you a proposal to make June 6th the last student contact day for both Castle and Richardson to accommodate the needed time for packing.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Any counter questions? We have just?
Could I add a comment?
Yes.
If I could just add a quick comment. Chair Yonar and Directors of the Board, as we talked about opportunities for our staff to get ready for the big move ahead, I just want to just reiterate that we're not going to save all of the packing for the last day. There's going to be a lot of supports and opportunities provided between now and the end of the school year for getting that work done so that as much as possible, we can get the ball rolling while keeping instruction at its highest level all the way through the school year. So the nice thing is, if you think about 20 classrooms or so in a school and about 79 staff in a school, we'll be able to have lots of hands on deck, including District Education Center people to help with packing on that last day of school. So our goal is to have the minimum inconvenience to families and also get the job done in a timely fashion. So just, just wanted to add that point.
Teresa?
I'd like to add, I was really comforted when Bridget, the principal at Castle, today reiterated much of that and how she felt the one day was, was going to be adequate. My only comment is that we, we work closely at communicating with those two schools right away so they can plan for those, for that child's absence from school, since their older siblings may be in school, so.
Okay, thanks very much. So let's do this resolution. Revision of the 2018-2019 school calendars for Castle, Richardson's last student, Castle and Richardson's last student contact day. Be it resolved by School Board of Independent School District Number 622, that the 2018-2019 school calendar be revised to reflect June 6, 2019, as the last student contact day for Castle Elementary and Richardson Elementary students. So I need a motion and a second for that resolution. Moved by Navy?
Second.
Second by Jarman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. Okay, and that resolution is approved. Thank you, Peter. Okay. Next, we have for the School Board. So we need to, let me see. We have to set a date, time, and location for our retreat. No, we have set a date, time, and location for a retreat, but we need to set the agenda. So suggested topics include an icebreaker, followed by the superintendent check-in, facilities and referendum discussion, and then a conversation about the equity work that's happening in the district right now. So any conversation about that, or I'll read the resolution. Okay, I recommend that the February 23rd, 2019 retreat, which begins at 9:00 a.m. in Conference Room 202 of the District Education Center, include the following agenda items. Number one, icebreaker. Number two, superintendent check-in. Number three, facilities referendum. And four, equity work in 622 MDHR, Reimagine Minnesota, Student Voice, and Leadership. So can I get a motion and a second for that? Moved. Second. Moved by OJ. Second by Livingston. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. Okay, that is approved. Then we move, number, the next one is set a closed session. So to be proactive with contract negotiations, it's been suggested that we have an initial discussion. So we're proposing a closed session immediately following the adjournment of the February 26, 2019 business meeting. So the resolution is that a closed session take place immediately following the adjournment of the February 26, 2019 business meeting for the purpose of having an initial contract negotiation discussions. So again, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Anderson. Second. Second by Navy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. So we have set the closed session. Next, we have to set time, agenda, and location for the February 12, 2019 work session. So again, we have the date, time, and location and agenda. The suggested topics include superintendent check-in, Kristen's assessment update, Randy's budget process update and plan, and policy revisions. Michelle?
Yes.
I'd like to throw another topic in there and that'd just be facilities as a possible placeholder so that maybe if we have questions about anything we heard tonight, we can give some direction to Christine and the Cabinet to better prepare for the retreat.
Okay.
Just a, just a thought.
Yep, I think we had a communication from here on out, every meeting's going to include an agenda item with facilities.
Yeah, I don't, it wasn't, did I miss it?
It is not listed on here.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That must be an oversight because I did email, yeah, I did email that to the board members, but we'll have to add that in. Thanks.
Okay, so we'll add that in. Do I need to do anything for Robert's rules to add that in?
When you are reading the resolution, you just add that as an agenda item for facilities. We had it tucked underneath the superintendent's check-in, but it's a good suggestion to leave it as a separate item.
Okay, so I'm going to put it as number five. Okay, so anything else before I read the resolution? That the February 12, 2019 work-study session begin at 4:30 p.m. in Conference Room 202 of the District Education Center with the following agenda items. Number one, superintendent check-in. Number two, assessment update. Number three, budget 2019-2020 enrollment and financial projections, recommended additions and reductions, and 2018-2019 budget revisions. And number four, policy revisions. And number five, facilities. So again, we need a motion and a second for approval. Moved by Jarman?
Second.
Second by Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. So we have the work-study sessions. Next, set work sessions, what is that one? Set work, okay. Set work sessions, March and June. Randy's requested two additions, requested the addition of two budget-related work sessions, one in March and one in June. The March session would take place 30 minutes prior to the March 26 reflection session. And the June session would be an added date proposed for June 11th. Okay. I'm going to read the resolution. Ms. Randy, did you want to say something?
We did the same thing last year, the March session. We just talked about capital and the capital budget that we need approved and to allocate capital dollars.
Thank you. Okay. That a work-study session begin on March 26, 2019 at 4:30 PM in Room 202 of the District Education Center with the following agenda. Number one, capital budget review. Number two, summer long-term facilities maintenance projects, budgets. And number three, facilities. And that a work session begin on June 11, 2019 at 4:30 in Room 202 of the District Education Center with the following agenda. Budget review, all funds, and facilities. So again, I need a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Moved by OJ.
Second.
Second by Navy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. So we have an approved work session for March and June. All right, next on the agenda, we have Board Communications, and Teresa, do you want to start us off?
I just want to thank again the opportunity for, for seeing that where Castle's at and that furniture. And, you know, I went to all three of the public sessions that Christine and Josh put on, and I thank you both for, for all of that. I, I, the reception has been really well-received from those that I sat with. The last one was really super attended well. I would just like to, to see if there can be some ways, some opportunities for some public open houses as Castle and Richardson get done, that, that are, you know how you invited the community to each of the schools the first time before the groundbreaking? I think it'd be really cool if you had a public open house, you know, before schools or when they're ready to open, just a thought, and of course, get us in there again.
One, how impressive that our kindergarten teachers are so awesome, and I think that it's, again, an affirmation that, you know, with our youngest kids, this is not babysitting. This is, this is important learning, and they are closing the achievement gap with this, with this very intentional work, and I'm, I'm so happy about that. That's really great. And I think, you know, as, as you said, Peter, that there's more and more research coming out about how important that early childhood learning is. And as a grandmother with three, three-year-olds, who all came over the other day and made lots of noise and touched everything, I can tell you that their, their brains are just, you know, they're just little sponges, and they are so ready to learn, and we have to be there for them. They can't be parked in front of a TV set or something, you know? This, this is, this is important work. At the legislature, a lot of talk about the cost of special education and how the federal government is not coming through with its promise to fund, you know, what is it, 30% or something? They're supposed to be fun, 40%? They're not doing it. And, and so it's coming out of our general education budget, and of course, it's important work, and we have to do it, but if the state could come through with more dollars for, for that, it would be extremely helpful to us, so. How much is our cross-subsidy now? Do we know off the, off the top, Christine? Randy? $12 million. $12 million that we, that we take out of our general fund in addition, this is in addition to, to what we spend. Yeah. So that would be, that would be great. Also, there, there's one other item that's coming up, and there's a bill introduced by Senator Rest, who is an expert on taxes, and she has introduced a bill that would make it possible to renew our operating levy referendum by just a vote of, of the board. And that would save us a lot of time and energy, you know, we don't, and money, if we could renew that without having to go to the voters, have a special election. I mean, it takes people, all these, you know, experts away from what they should be doing for us and making them, you know, rattle the tin cup, where we really don't need to be doing that, because most of them pass anyway. So just renewals by a vote of the board would be great, so I'm, let's pay attention to that, so, yeah, that's it.
I just wanted to give a shout-out. Sorry. Can I see my speaker voice? I gotta use the mic.
You can stop that. Here, let me help you.
All right. I just want to give a shout-out to a meeting that I attended a couple weeks ago. It's called the LGBTQ+ Staff Affinity Group, and I'm going to read right off of here what the focus of that group is. The focus of the group is to provide a safe and inclusive space to discuss issues facing LGBTQ+ staff within the district and to advocate for the support of LGBTQ+ students. And a gentleman by the name of Wayne Felton runs this meeting, and I believe they're going to meet again in March, and he's looking to see if anyone else could consider attending that meeting. I think it's a really good courageous conversation that's happening in that meeting, so I ask any staff or particularly teachers to join that meeting if possible, so, thank you.
Yeah, just a quick clarification, that that meeting was our Allies' meeting. We actually also have an affinity meeting as well, but the one that you were referring to that has the open invitation to all employees is the Allies' group.
Okay, thank you, Peter, and thanks, Ben. Okay, with that, our future board meeting dates are February 12, 2019 work-study session, a February 23, 2019 board retreat at 9:00 AM in Room 202, our February 26, 2019 business meeting, 6:00 PM in the boardroom. Okay, so with that, I'm looking for a motion, a second, to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by OJ.
Second.
Second by Livingston, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah.